Maayong aga sa tuntanan and welcome to our regular session. Today, September 9, 2024. The regular session of the 21st Sangguniang Bayan will please now come to order. May I request everyone to please rise for an invocation to be led by Honorable Attorney Mayor Blight Cartuhanogaringo and be followed by the singing of the national anthem and Isulan him with the overture and the Councilor's creed to be led by Honorable Engineer Marvin Delanon.
Let us all stand up and bow down our heads in prayer in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning to ask for your wisdom, your guidance and support as we begin this regular session of the Sangguniang Bayan of Isulan. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion and fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect not only our municipality but also its people. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we ever accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you and for the service of all mankind. We ask these things in your name, amen, in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Welcome to our regular session. Hello, my test. Welcome to our regular session today, September 9, 2024. May I request our secretary to please do the roll call.
Honorable Carlo Apiado, Honorable Argent K. Palasigi, Honorable Moises Dular, Honorable Ryan Dumaran, Honorable Darling Lama, Honorable Maria Channarin Mihya, Honorable Mary Blight Cartuhanogaringo, Honorable Marvin Delanon, Honorable Jofordurana, Honorable Valjean Foscavlo. Honorable Presiding Officer, at this moment there are six members who are present and four members are absent. Those absent are Honorable Argent K. Palasigi, who is currently on official leave. Likewise, Honorable Maria Channarin Mihya is also on official leave. And Honorable Jofordurana as well as Honorable Valjean Foscavlo are likewise on official leave, your honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Considering that six members are present into this session, the Chair declares that we have a call room. Next item, Madam Secretary.
So we are now in the reading and consideration of the minutes of the previous session. We have two minutes to be considered in today's session, your honor. We have August 21, August 21 which is the special session, your honor, and September 3, 2024.
Okay, we will consider first our minutes dated August 21, 2024 during our special session. Any clarification as to our minutes dated September 21, 2024? Honorable Moises Dular is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. So if there is no comment or correction about previous minutes dated August 21, 2024, I am agree with adoption.
There is a motion for the adoption of our minutes duly seconded. Any objection? So hearing none, our minutes dated September 21, 2024 is hereby adopted. We'll now proceed to our minutes dated September 3, 2024. Mr. Chair. Honorable Na Dumaran is recognized.
Correction lang, pakiwi. On my committee report. MTB and RB, not ARB. Road bike, RB lang siya.
MTB stands for mountain bike and RB stands for road bike. Any more correction?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable.
Pakiipabalikliwat. Criterion is R-I-U-N? R-I-U-M. Criterion.
Criterion.
I-U-M.
Any more correction?
MM.
Criterion.
MM.
Any more correction? Honorable Dumaran is recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if there is no more correction, I move for the adoption of the previous minutes dated September 3, 2024.
There is a motion for the adoption of our minutes duly seconded. Any objection? So hearing none, our minutes dated September 3, 2024 is hereby approved and adopted as corrected.
We are now on the privilege hour, your honor.
Any member who wants to render a privileged speech? So if there's none, let's proceed, Madam Secretary.
So we are now on the first reading. The first item is letter received from the Office of the Mayor addressed to the Acting Vice Mayor requesting for the passing of an ordinance supporting the Community Driven Development, or CDD.
May we know if, may we read the content of the request, Madam Secretary? Community Driven Development is regarding our, is it with regard to our Calahi program or any idea, Madam Secretary?
So attached in the said letter, your honor, is the letter from the Regional Director of the DSWD addressed to the Honorable or the Acting Municipal Mayor, Honorable Arnold Armada, your honor. So may I read this letter, your honor? So it is addressed to the Honorable Acting Mayor. Says here, greetings. This is in connection to the advocacy to institutionalize the community-driven development and its principles as a strategy for inclusive growth and social protection. Several bills have been filed by the lawmakers in Congress to push for the institutionalization of the Community Driven Development, or CDD approach, which later consolidated into one title as an act institutionalizing the Community Driven Development, or CDD approach as a national strategy for inclusive growth and social protection and appropriating funds therefore. Further, in recognition of the gains and impact of the Calahi CIDSS program to incorporate the Community Driven Development approach, several barangays, municipal and provincial local government units have passed ordinance as enabling policy for its institutionalization and as support to pending bills in both lower and upper house of Congress. As one of the Calahi CIDSS champion municipalities, the undersigned would like to request for the passage of an ordinance in your municipality supporting the CDD that will also help legislators approve the pending bill. Should you have any concerns, please contact Mr. Abdullah Ililangan, Community Development Officer for. So there is a mobile number and email. So this is from Director Loretto Jonner Vicabaya, DSWD Regional Director 12.
Okay, refer this matter to the Committee on Social Services.
Next is the endorsement received from the Office of the Mayor forwarding to yours truly the letter from the Office of the Punong Barangay of Lagilayan. This is as regards Executive Order Number 8 and 9 Series of 2024. So the barangay Lagilayan has issued barangay executive order number 8 Series of 2024 entitled "An Executive Order Disallowing the Use of Helmet, Face Mask and Bonnet Within the Territorial Jurisdiction of barangay Lagilayan." And this is signed by the Punong Barangay Jonas Vimanjago.
May we, pardon, Madam Secretary.
So the title of the executive order, your honor, is "An Executive Order Disallowing the Use of Helmet, Face Mask and Bonnet Within the Territorial Jurisdiction of barangay Lagilayan," Isulan Sultanko darat.
Of the record. That's for our information. Item, Madam Secretary.
Next item under first reading is endorsement received from the Office of the Mayor forwarding to the Honorable Vice Mayor the letter from the Department of Social Welfare and Development. So this is the request for passage of ordinance.
Agenda is EO Number 8 and 9 Series of 2024 of barangay Lagilayan. And what we discussed away ago, atong EO Number 8.
Your honor, so as per existence of the document, your honor, there is only one executive order number, there's only one barangay executive order which is executive order number 8, your honor. There is no such executive order number 9.
Noted, Madam Secretary.
So I think this item number 3 and number 1 is the same document, your honor.
Refer that matter to the Committee on Social Services.
Then item number 4, resolution number 2024-11 and 2024-12 of barangay Impaw. First, we have number 11 requesting for a special permit to conduct cockfighting as part of the 62nd founding anniversary of the barangay Impaw on October 29, 2024.
Schedule that matter for a second reading into this session.
Another resolution, number 12, requesting permit for the operation of contrivance group, contrivance group as part of the 62nd founding anniversary of the barangay Impaw on October 29, 2024. For permit for the operation of contrivance group. Contrivance? Basi tong mga.
For a while, Madam Secretary. The Chair a while ago ruled that EO of barangay Lagilayan is for our information, but as to the powers and functions of the Sangguniang, we are authorized to review all, to review all ordinances approved by the Sangguniang barangay and executive order issued by the Punong barangay. The Chair would like to change his ruling that the matter be referred to the Committee on Laws. Please endorse Resolution Number 2024-12 of barangay Impaw to the Office of the Acting Mayor. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Next is item number 5, the memorandum order received from the Office of the Punong barangay of Kalawag II to due that Yanagida barangay Administrator with the subject designation as officer in charge of the Office of the Punong barangay.
For our information.
So we have no more items under first reading. We'll proceed now to the committee reports. First to report is the Committee on Laws, Rules and Ordinances.
The Chairperson of the Committee is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my fellow members of the Sangguniang Bayan. This is the third committee report of the Committee on Laws, Rules and Ordinances regarding the following item. Resolution Number 3 Series of 2024 of barangay Colambog approving the change of name of Porok Dos into Porok Kapunan. Pursuant to the referred matter, the this committee Pursuant to the referred matter that this committee, the committee dispensed holding a committee hearing considering that the same could be addressed without the need of such proceedings. So here are the findings of the committee. The committee, motu proprio, produced resolution number three, series of 2024 of barangay Colambog approving the change of name of Porok Dos into Porok Kapunan. As per resolution number three, series of 2024 of barangay Colambog, Porok Dos is recognized as one of the poroks of barangay Colambog. That there was a petition from a majority of people in the said porok to change its name from Porok Dos to be known thereafter as Porok Kapunan for the reason that the Kapunan family donated a parcel of land wherein the porok center is located. In local parlance, a porok refers to a geographical zone or division within the barangay. It serves as a means to deliver basic services within the barangay aimed at strengthening participatory governance and more efficient public service delivery at the grassroots level. It is important to know that poroks are not officially regarded as a local government unit under the Local Government Code or Republic Act 7160. A porok may be created or formally recognized by the barangay through local ordinance which may specify its meets and bounds, organizational structure, internal rules, among others. This is allowed under the Local Government Code. Formally established poroks are under the control and supervision of the barangay, particularly the ordinance creating or recognizing the same. Therefore, resolution number three, series of 2024 of barangay Colambog is an approval of its barangay government affirming the change of name of one its poroks from Porok Dos to be known as Porok Kapunan. Having laid down the foregoing, the committee is aware that the sanguniang bayan has no jurisdiction over the matter. Further, this committee opines that the residents of the porok with the leadership of the porok president were just showing an act of kindness in return and recognizing gratitude towards the Kapunan family. Wherefore premises considered, the committee hereby recommends archiving resolution number three, series of 2024 of barangay Colambog for information purposes only. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Laws, Rules and Ordinances with this representation as committee chairperson and Honorable Maria Ginaline Enmehia as committee vice chairperson. That is all, Mr. Chair.
Any clarification as regard the committee report of the committee on laws? So if there's none, will the proponent move for the adoption of the said report?
Of course, Mr. Chair. I move for the adoption of committee report number three of the committee on laws.
There's a motion for the adoption of the report. Julie seconded, any objection? Hearing none. The said committee report of the committee on laws, rules and ordinances is hereby adopted. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Next committee report is from the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means.
The chairperson of the committee is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer, and good morning to each and everyone. So this committee report number 2024-22, pursuant to the refer the calendar year 2024 supplemental budget number one of barangaya Dilotilia to this committee. The same was forwarded to the office of the municipal budget officer for a preliminary review. On September 4, 2024, this office received copies of the preliminary review of this supplemental budget from the office of the municipal budget officer addressed to the honorable members of the sangunian through yours truly as such a person of this committee. So item supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2024 of barangay Dilotilia amounting to 2 million pesos. Findings, as per preliminary review, the supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2024 of barangay Dilotilia involving a total appropriation of 2 million pesos revealed substantial compliance with the Republic Act 7160 and its limiting rules and regulations and subject to the following conditions as follows. The programs, projects and activities of this supplemental budget should be included in the annual investment program of the municipal isulan and barangay development investment plan of barangay Dilotilia. Number two, funds of the purchase of one unit minidam truck shall be disbursed in accordance with the provisions of DBM Budget Circular 2022-1 specifying the omnibus guidelines in the acquisition use rental and replacement of government motor vehicles dated February 11, 2022. The memorandum agreement must be approved by both parties, LGU Isulan and barangay Dilotilia. Accordingly, it is understood that the respective review action for this supplemental budgets does not budget, does not authorize any item of operation that is specifically prohibited or inconsistent with the provisions of law. Further, strict compliance with all existing accounting, auditing and other administrative rules and regulations shall be properly observed in the implementation of this supplemental budget. And the same shall be a responsibility of the concerned implementing barangay unit. Finally, based on the foregoing findings, the committee is of unanimous opinion to declare the supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2024 of barangay Dilotilia operative in its entirety effective immediately as reviewed by the committee pursuant to section 333 of Republic Act 7160 as amended otherwise known as the Local Government Code of 1991. Recommendation, wherefore premises considered, the committee hereby recommends a passing a resolution declaring the supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2024 of barangay Dilotilia amounting to 2 million pesos operative in its entirety as of its effective date. Further, that this measure be deliberated on scannable reading decision respectfully submitted by the Committee on Finance, Budget and Appropriations, Ways and Means committee chairman as yours truly and Honorable Marvin Delanon, committee vice chairperson.
Will the proponent move for the adoption of the committee report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of my committee report number 2024-22.
Second.
There's a motion for the adoption of the committee report. Julie seconded, any objection? Hearing none. The said committee report number 24-2022 of the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means is hereby adopted and scheduled for second reading into this session.
Mr. Chair, another committee report on the same committee, committee report on committee on finance budget appropriation and ways and means. Pursuant to the referred matters to this committee, a committee hearing was conducted on September 5, 2024 at 9:30 in the morning at the sanguniang bayan session hall, Isulan Sultan Quatrat. Present during the committee hearing were the municipal budget officer, the municipal treasurer, the municipal engineer and the members comprising this committee. Items endorsement later received from the office of the mayor forwarding to the acting vice mayor, Honorable Carlo E. Fapiado, the leader from the office of the municipal engineer requests for SB resolution. And number two, later received from the office of the mayor addressed to the acting vice mayor, Honorable Carlo Fapiado, the presiding officer, requesting for the passing of resolution amending the account names of the following bank accounts of the municipal isulan. So findings and discussions, item number one. Endorsement later received from the office of the mayor forwarding to the acting vice mayor, Honorable Carlo Fapiado, the leader from the office of the municipal engineer, requests for SB resolution. The forward letter of the office of the municipal engineering, engineer of building official is requesting for the oral SB resolution authorizing the approving of the utilization of 15% retention of the building code collection under the trust fund as one of the requirements of their request with the Department of Interior and Local Government, DILG. The office of the municipal engineer, building official is proposing to purchase one unit for biotopic up vehicle for the use of the same office chargeable against the 2024 regular budget per appropriation ordinance number 23-06 amounting to 900,000 and 15% retention of the building code collections under the trust fund amounting to 770,000. This amount will be added to the regular budget to realize the total cost of the vehicle unit which amounts to 1,670,000 pesos. In the utilization of the 15% retention while building code collection under the trust fund, it requires compliance with one of the requirements set by the Department of the Interior and Local Government, DILG. Thus, a resolution is needed to officially use the same which amounts to 770,000 pesos. And item number two, later received from the office of the mayor addressed to the acting vice mayor, Honorable Carlo E. Fapiado, presiding officer requesting for the passing of a resolution amending the account names of the following bank accounts of the municipality. The account names of the following bank accounts of the municipality are as follows. Account name current municipality of Isulan PRDP Rural Infra LP and then your account name is PRDP SU-LGU Isulan IBL LP. Account number 2452-1051, balances of 21,200 pesos. And the municipal of Isulan PRDP GOP. Two, PRDP SU-LGU Isulan IBL GOP with account number 2452-1051-80 with an amount of 938,700 pesos and 26 centavos. And the municipality of Isulan PRDP LGU counterpart, PRDP two, PRDP SU-LGU Isulan IBL equity with account number 24-2452-1051-63 with an amount of 179,618 pesos and 47 centavos. The municipal treasurer informed the committee that the Philippine rural development projects, PRDP, has changed the name of its programs or projects for implementation of the same to beneficiary LGUs. In order to the LGU Isulan not to incur charges for opening another accounts for the PRDP projects, it is best recommended to just change the name of the current account to the new account name laid down by the PRDP. Recommendation, wherefore premises considered, the committee hereby recommends passing the following measures, resolution authorizing the approving the utilization. Amending the current account names of the following PRDP bank accounts of the municipal isulan from account name, municipal of Isulan PRDP Rural Infra, does LP two, new account PRDP SU-LGU Isulan IBL LP with account number 2452-1052-71, balances of 21,200. And the municipality of Isulan PRDP GOP, two PRDP SU-LGU Isulan IBL GOP with account number 2452-1051-80 with a balances of 938,700 pesos and 26 centavos. Municipality of Isulan PRDP LGU counterpart, PRDP two, PRDP SU-LGU Isulan IBL equity with account number 2452-1052-63 with an amount balances of 179,618 pesos and 47 centavos. Further, that this measures be deliberated on scannable reading decision respectfully submitted by the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means, yours truly as a committee chairman and Honorable Marvin Delanon as a committee vice chairperson.
Any clarification as to the content of the committee report? So if there's none, will the proponent move for its adoption?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of my committee report number 2024-23.
There's a motion for the adoption and approval of the committee report. Julie seconded, any objection? So hearing none. The committee report of the Committee on Finance, committee report number 2024-23 is hereby adopted and scheduled for second reading into this session. Next item, Madam Secretary.
So next report is the joint report of the Committee on Social Services, God's Senior Citizens, LGBTQIA+ and Children's Welfare and the Committee on Women, Family and Solo Parent.
The chairperson of the Committee on Social Services is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My committee reports have checked the Committee Social Services, God's Senior Citizens, LGBTQIA+ and Children's Welfare and the Committee of Women, Solo Parent, joint committee report number 2024-01. Pursuant to the referred matter to this committee, a committee hearing was conducted on September 4, 2024 at 2 o'clock in the afternoon at the sanguniang bayan session hall, Isulan Sultan Quatrat invited during the same where the municipal social welfare and development officer, the municipal legal officer, the municipal treasurer, the municipal budget officer and the members of comprising this committee. Item later received from the office of the mayor addressed to the office of the municipal vice mayor requesting for the resolution approving the 2025 annual work and financial plan and budget for the children's by virtue of LCPC resolution number 2024-04. Discussion and findings, the MSWDO Miss Eileen Illoctogan RSW presented to the committee the LCPC resolution number 2024-4 of local council of the protection of children's which endorses the approved 2025 annual work and financial plan and the budget for the children in the amount of 7,168,042 pesos. The local council of the protection of children was determined different program, projects and activities for the purpose of the amount of 7,168,042 pesos represent the 1% budget allocation of the total era of the local government unit of Isulan intended for the programs, projects and activities that will be promote the general welfare of children. The Philippine constitution guarantees that the rights of children to assistance including the proper care, nutrition, the special protection from all forms of neglect, abuse, cruelty, exploitation and other condition prejudicial to their development. The Local Government Code or our Republic Act 76-10 provides for the strongest, stronger determines and the social protection against the child abuse, exploitation and discrimination and for the other purposes. The municipal government of Isulan is committed to uphold the right and protection, promote the general welfare of the children taking into consideration the pillars of the child development or the gift namely survival protection and participation and shall be pursued the program and mechanism to ensure the protection and development of children as mandated by the constitution. The committee after thorough perusal and scrutiny of the different programs, project and activities embedded in 2025 annual work and financial plan for the budget children found in the same line and accord with the existing plan of the municipality, copy of this 2025 annual work and financial plan and the budget for children will be part of the parcel of this committee report. Consistently legislative measure necessary to adopt the probable annual work and financial plan and budget for children for calendar year 2025. Recommendation, therefore premises considered, this committee hereby recommended passing resolution adapting the approval 2025 annual work and financial plan and budget for the children in the amount of 7,168,042 pesos. That further proposed measure to be reflected in the second reading decision. Respectfully submitted, the committee in social services, God's senior citizen, LGBT and children's welfare, yours truly, chairperson, Honorable Ginaline Mihya, vice chairperson. Your story, Chairperson, Honorable Gina Lynn Mihiya, Vice Chairperson, Honorable. Argent K. Palasiggy Secretary in the committee on women and family solo parent, Honorable Mar Maria Gina Lynn Mihiya, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson. Darling Ichlama, Honorable Mar Marie Belite Icardo Hano Garingo Secretary. That's all my committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Any um question or clarification? As regard the um report, so hearing none, will the proponent move for its adoption?
Mr. Chair, I move my committee report for adoption in social services. Requesting for resolution approving the twenty to five annual work and financial plan and budget for children by virtue of LCPC resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero four.
Okay, there's a motion for the adoption of the committee report, any objection? So hearing none, the said committee report is hereby adapted and scheduled for second reading into this session.
Next report is from the committee report from the uh committee on social services, God, senior citizens. LGBTQIA+ and children's welfare.
My committee report. On committee on social services, God, senior citizen LGBT, QIA+, children welfare committee report number twenty twenty four dash five. For sent to the refer matter of this committee, a committee hearing was conducted on September four twenty twenty four at two o'clock in the afternoon. At the Sangginyang Bayan Session Hall, Isulan Sultan Kudrat invited during the same where the municipal. Social welfare and development officer, municipal legal officer and municipal treasurer, the municipal budget officer and the members of comprising this committee. Items forwarded copy of God's resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero two of Isulan gender and development. God Pokal Point Council, number two endorsement received from the office of the mayor forwarded to Honorable Carlo Ifapiado. Acting municipal vice mayor requesting for the passing solution authorizing the mayor to enter into AMOA. With the DSWD in relation to provision of technical advisory assistance and other related supported services. Discussion and finding findings, item number one forwarded copy God's resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero two of the Isulan gender and development. During the committee hearing, Ms. Eileen Luctogan, the MSWDO represented to the committee on annual budget for the gender and development God plan. Of the municipality of Isulan for calendar year twenty twenty five amounting of twenty eight. Million eight hundred eighty four thousand one hundred and two pesos. The MSWD explained that the God plan was thoroughly and carefully formulated by the the Isulan God Pokal Point system members. For sent to uh to join circular. Twenty twelve dash zero one Philippine Commission on Women's. National Economic and Development Authority, NIDA, Department of Budget and Management. On the guidelines for the preparation of God plans and budgets. And accomplishment report implementing the Magna Carta for women, a general provision now known as God budget policy. Mandating all departments, bureaus, offices and agencies to sit aside the less five percent of this appropriation for. Project designed to agree to address gender issues. The God plan and budget for calendar year twenty twenty five. Conform that the the development trust of the administration may governance a gender responsive responsive which mandates. Non discriminatory and non and proved gender equality and equality measures to enable. People's participation of the formulation, implementation and evaluation of of policies, plans and programs. For local development, the same was certified as review and was found contain compliant in form and contents with the provision of Republic Act number. Nine seven one zero and its implementing rules and regulations. The officially endorsed by the ILG provincial office for incorporation in the municipal annual investment program in annual budget. Summary, number one, God plans twenty twenty five eighteen eighteen million four hundred seventy seven thousand eight hundred fifty two. Number two, by attribution, completing of roads, ten million four hundred six thousand two hundred fifty. In the total of twenty eight million eight hundred eighty four one hundred two pesos. In the said God plan, the budget for calendar year twenty twenty five was approved. And endorsed to the Sangginyang Bayan for adoption, approved by the virtue of God's resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero two of Isulan gender development. God Pokal Point Council, copy of the God plans budget will. Form part of this committee report, the committee expressed its support to the programs, projects and activities of the of the God and by the approving the adapting plan. Calendar year twenty twenty five with corresponding budget will be essential to the implementation. Item number two endorsement received from the office of the mayor forwarded to the Honorable. Ifapiado acting vice municipal mayor requesting for the passing solution authorizing the mayor to enter the into AMOA. With the DSWD relation to the provision of technical advisory assistance and other related support service services. The endorsement later received from the office of the mayor is attached with the leader of the department of social welfare and development. The General Director Loretto Junior Vicabaya in the draft copy of memorandum of agreement. MOA, the letter was addressed to acting municipal mayor, Honorable Arnold H. Armada. Attention of Ms. Eileen Illoctogan, MSWDO informing that one of these WD's roles in the. Divolution is the provision of technical assistance to increase capacity of the LS WDOs in the delivery of. Delivery of social welfare protection programs and services to strengthen the partnership between the DSWD in the local government unit. AMOA will be for to tighten the collaboration. Network those that is WD in transmitting the said MOA for appropriate action. After which the office of the mayor endorsed the same to the Sangginyang. Requesting for the legislative measure which the proposed resolution authorizing the mayor to sign AMOA. With the DSWD resolution to the provision of technical advisory assistance and other related support services. Legal basis, executive number fifteen nineteen ninety eight as amended by executive order number two number two two one. Two thousand three stated that this WD is mandated to provide assistance to local government units, LGUs. Non-government organization and GUs and the other national government agency. People's organization, CEOs in the effectively implementing the program project and the services. That will be elevate property in empower the disadvantaged individual families and communities for the improved quality. Of life as well as implement implement supplementary and specialized program which are directly lodged. With the department and or not yet devolved to LGUs, this WD memorandum circular number ten twenty eighteen provided this WD assist. LGLGU LSWD office by providing direction for this for this WD sector. Through procurement policies and plans in enriching is WD program services for individuals, individuals, families. And communities address in or in need in affording social protection for the poor and the vulnerable and disadvantage in localities. This undertaking are manifested manifested through the technical assistance and resource augmentation. Program for the DSWD in the implementation of the technical advisory assistance and other related support. The parties must agree and commit themselves to the following responsibilities being laid down in the MOA. The the DSWD shall letter A provide the technical assistance to the LGU along the areas specified in the. TA plan which shall include not limited to the training or number one training, number two orientation, number three workshop, number four forum, number five conference. Six coaching and seven monitoring mentoring. Letter B provide the rewards, the initiatives on the best practices of the LGU through the. Pagkilala sa natatanging contribution sa bayan na panata ko sa bayan award under this WD memorandum circular. Eighteen series of twenty twenty three with the subject supplemental guidelines of memorandum circular number one series of twenty seventeen. Revised guidelines on the pagkilala sa natatanging contribution award on the provide provision of rewards. And initiatives to the local government unit through local social welfare and development local implementation, letter C conduct the service delivery capacity. Assessment person to the DSWD MC number ten series of twenty eighteen. Or the guidance on the provision of technical assistance local government unit through the local welfare in the development office. Offices which shall be scheduled and agreed upon between the parties, letter D monitor the progress. Accomplishment accomplishment of the LGU in reference to the LGU TA plan. The LGU shall letter A submit a three-year TA plan approver approved and signed by the LCE. And the LSWD will head to the DSWD through the concerned regional regional director within five days upon execution of the MOA. Letter B make available the necessary counterpart staff logistic and. Or fund to enable to the DSWD support to the TA plan. Letter C assist the DSWD in the annual monitoring of the TA plan to identify address implementation gaps, problems, issues. Number three, the parties, the parties may jointly conduct annual review of the TA program implementation based on the formulated. Three three-year TA plan and number four, no amendment amendment or modification to agreement shall be. Effective unless it is in writing and signed by the July authorized representative of both parties. In the view of the above, in foregoing of MOA need an authority from the Sangginyang Bayan. Recommendation, where where for premises considered the committee hereby recommends passing following, number one resolution. Approving the adapting of God plan and budget of municipality of Isulan calendar year twenty twenty five by the virtue of God's resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero two. Number two, resolution authorizing the mayor to sign MOA with the DSWD in relation to provision to of. Technical advisory assistance and other related support services. Further, that this measure be deliberated on second reading session. Respectfully submitted by the committee on social services, gender and development, senior citizen, LGBTQIA+ and children's welfare. Uh committee chairperson, your story and vice committee chairperson Maria Gina Lynn Mihiya and committee secretary. Honorable Argent K. Palasiggy, that's all my committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Um thank you, Honorable Darling Lama. What's the pleasure of the committee?
Uh Mr. Chairman, I move my committee report for adoption on social services. Uh God resolution number twenty twenty four zero dash zero two of Isulan gender development. Council, number two endorsement received the municipal mayor for passing a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter the MOA with the. DSWD in relation to the provision to technical advisory assistance and other related support service.
There's a motion, Julie seconded, any objection? So hearing none, the said committee report. Number twenty twenty four dash five of the committee on social services is hereby adapted and scheduled for second reading into this session. Next item, Madama Secretary.
So we have no more committee reports, Your Honor. We'll proceed now to the calendar of business under second reading. So first is. Based on item number four of the first reading, which is the request for a special permit to conduct cockfighting. As part of the sixty second founding anniversary of Barangay Impaw on October twenty nine twenty twenty four by virtue of. Resolution number twenty twenty four dash eleven of Barangay Impaw, Your Honor.
Any um sponsor? Honorable uh. Honorable Marvin Delano is recognized.
I move for the passing of a resolution number twenty twenty four dash eleven. Requesting for a special permit to conduct cockfighting as part of the sixty second founding anniversary of Barangay Impaw on October twenty nine twenty twenty four.
There's a motion, any seconded, Julie seconded, any objection? So hearing none. A resolution is hereby passed. Granting the conduct of cockfighting of Barangay Impaw as part of the sixty second founding anniversary. Of Barangay Impaw on October twenty nine twenty twenty four by virtue of resolution number twenty twenty four dash eleven. Next item, Madama Secretary.
So next item under second reading is based on the committee report of the committee on finance, budget appropriations and ways and means.
Honorable Dular is recognized.
So Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution declaring a supplemental budget number one for calendar year twenty twenty four of Barangay Dilutilia amounting to two million pesos. Uh operative in its entirety as of its effective date.
Second. There's a motion, Julie seconded, any objection? So hearing none, a resolution is hereby passed. Declaring supplemental budget number one for calendar year twenty twenty four of Barangay Dilutilia amounting to two million pesos. Operator with its entirety as of its effective date is hereby. Approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I move for a another resolution. Authorizing or approving the utilization of the fifteen percent retention of the building code collection under the trust fund amounting to a seven hundred seventy thousand pesos.
There's a motion, any seconded, Julie seconded, any objection? Amendment, objection? So hearing none, a resolution is hereby passed authorizing. The utilization of fifty percent retention of the building code collection under the trust fund amounting to seven hundred seventy thousand pesos.
And I move for a resolution amending for a passing of resolution amending the current account names of the following PRDP bank accounts to the municipality to win. Uh account name municipality of Isulan PRDP rural infra LP. To a new name PRDP issue dash LGU Isulan Ibuild LP with an with an account number twenty four five two dash ten fifty one dash seventy one. With a balances of twenty one thousand two hundred pesos and the number two municipality of Isulan PRDP GOP. Two PRDP issue LGU Isulan Ibuild GOP with with an account number of twenty four five two dash ten fifty two dash eighty. With a balances of nine hundred thirty eight thousand seven hundred pesos and twenty six centavos. And the number three municipality of Isulan PRDP LGU counterpart. Two PRDP issue dash LGU Isulan Ibuild equity with an with an account number twenty four. with a, with an account number twenty-four dash, twenty-four fifty-two dash ten fifty-one dash sixty-three uh with a balances of a hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred eighteen pesos and forty-seven thousand.
Second. There's emotion, Julie seconded, any discussion? Amendment, objection? So hearing none, a resolution is hereby passed amending the current account names of the following PRDP bank accounts of the municipality. From account name municipality of Isulan dash PRDP Rural Infra dash LP to new account name PRDP SU dash LGU Isulan dash I dash Build Up LP with account number two four five dash ten fifty-one dash seventy-one with the balance of twenty-one thousand two hundred. Account name municipality of Isu- Isulan dash PRDP dash GOP into new account name PRDP SU dash LGU Isulan dash I dash Build GOP with account number two four five dash ten fifty-one dash eighty with account, amount balance of nine hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred pesos and twenty-six centavos. And account name municipality of Isulan dash PRDP dash LGU counterpart to new account name PRDP SU dash LGU Isulan dash I dash Build Equity with account number two four five dash ten fifty-one dash sixty-three with a balance of uh one hundred seventy-nine thousand six hundred eighteen pesos forty-seven centavos. Next item, Madam Secretary.
So next proposed measure under second reading is uh based on the joint report of the committee on social services, God, senior citizens and the committee on women, family and solo parent.
The chairperson of the committee is uh recognized.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of my committee report passing resolution adopting the approved twenty-two-five annual work and financial plan and budget for children in the amount of seven million one hundred sixty-eight thousand forty-two pesos. That further proposed measure.
There's emotion, any discussion? Amendment, objection? So hearing none. A resolution is hereby passed, any secondar? There's emotion, Julie seconded? Any more discussion, amendment, objection, hearing none? A resolution is hereby passed adopting the approved twenty-two-five annual work and financial plan and budget for children in the amount of seven million one hundred sixty-eight thousand forty-two pesos. Next item, Madam Secretary.
Next is uh the proposed measures based on the committee report of the committee on social services, God, senior citizens, LGBTQIA+ and children's welfare.
The chairperson is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move resolution approving the, approving the adapting in God plan and budget of the municipality of Isulan calendar year twenty twenty-five by virtue of God resolution number twenty-two four dash zero two.
There's emotion, Julie seconded, any more discussion, amendment, objection? So hearing none. A resolution is hereby passed approving and adopting the gender and development plan and budget of the municipality of Isulan for calendar year twenty twenty-five by virtue of God resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero two. Next item.
Mr. Chairman, a resolution author, I move I move my committee report resolution authorizing the mayor to sign AMOHA. I move for a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign AMOHA with this WWD resolution to the provision of technical advisory assistance and other related support services.
There's emotion, Julie seconded, any more discussion, amendment, objection? So hearing none, a resolution is hereby passed authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement with the DSWD in relation to the provision of technical advisory assistance and other related support services. Next item, Madam Secretary.
So we have no more items under second reading, your honor. We'll proceed now to uh, there are, there are no more uh items in the order of business, your honor. However, I would like to ask to be apologetic this honorable body. So this is as regards executive order number nine of Barangay Lagilayan. So, sorry, your honors. Uh, since, um, na misplaced lang po yung ano, yung document, your honor. So this is Barangay Executive Order number nine, serves of twenty twenty-four of Barangay Lagilayan. An executive order establishing Barangay Peacekeeping Action Team or B-PAT outpost at Poruk Seven, Lagilayan, Isulan Sultan Kudarat.
Refer that matter to the committee on laws.
So we have already exhausted the items in the order of business, your honor. We'll proceed now to the unassigned business.
Any matter you wanted to raise under unassigned business?
Um, Mr. Chair, may I ask our secretary if um it's a holiday on September sixteen? So our next regular sex session will be on the seventeenth.
The seventeenth. As per our rule, if um our regular session is on holiday, the next working day would be our session day. Any more, any announcements?
About our cap, capability development.
We'll just talk it after this session na lang. Sige, um. If there are no more matters you wanted to discuss at uh eleven thirty-five, September nine, twenty twenty-four, our regular session is now adjourned.